Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming in this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, council members, if you would please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our city and for the citizens that come out to share in the discussion of the business of the city. We thank you for our council. We ask that you continue to bless us and strengthen us, that, Lord, we might synergize ourselves together for the main focus of making Portsmouth even better than what it already is. We give you praise, glory, and thanks for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
(affirmative) Amen. (affirmative) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay, thank you. Members of City Council, you have before you a consideration, the minutes of a call meeting on July the 14th, 2015, and a regular meeting July 14th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
With adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
Okay.
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, before I turn it over to you, I think we see a special guest here. Is that Mr. Slim Overton in attendance with us? Mr. Overton, it's good to see you, sir. Welcome back. All right. Everything all right? All right, that's good. Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Unfinished business. 15-260 rezoning. Resolution granted in the request of Elton Majet to rezone Point 428 acres from general mixed use to light industrial to allow an auto sales and major repair facility, including bodywork, to occupy the premises located at 3900 Garwood Avenue. Z1504 first reading vote seven zero, approved. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. City manager's report 15-274, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $409,310 of funding received from the federal government and the Commonwealth of Virginia in the FY2015-16 Asset Forfeiture Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department. Vision principle: Efficient response of government. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 15-275, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $513,722.57 from the Virginia Department of Health in appropriating said funds in the FY2015-16 Grant Fund for the summer food service program. Vision principle: Neighborhood and sense of community. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 15-276, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $544,950 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services in appropriating said funds in the FY2015-16 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pre-trial services in the city of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
With adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 15-277, adoption of a resolution to approve the FY16 Performance Contract for the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and a sense of community. Electronic roll call and have no registered speakers.
Please approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New business 15-278, boards and commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
Mayor and fellow City Councilmen and Councilwoman, I move that we appoint Amy Thompson to the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 15-279, items submitted by council members.
Councilman Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we add an item to the agenda.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item has been added by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, we have two motions that we talked about in the earlier meeting. First one is a resolution amending Section 17A of the Portsmouth City Council Rules of Order and Procedure to Limit the Time of Business Item Speaker and/or a Non-Agenda Item Speaker Has to Speak to a Maximum of Three Minutes. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, that Section 17A of the Portsmouth Council Rules of Order and Procedure shall reflect from this day forward, business agenda item and non-agenda item speakers shall have a maximum speaking time of three minutes for each occasion on which he or she speaks.
Yes, there is. Council members, even though we have a motion and a second, we need to open it up to the floor because this was not a pre-added item. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the added item of the three-minute rule for our speakers, please come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on this item.[502.03][502.03](laughter) Please give your name and address when you come forward.
My name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive, and I wasn't prepared to speak. But I was wondering, what's the rationale for this? You don't have to answer it, but I was wondering, am I doing the rationale?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Si Nau, City Attorney, and City Manager, Ms. White, just there. Clyde told a part of you, why are we keep on bringing up trouble every time we start getting something running right here? Why we always got somebody bringing up trouble? If we are not allowed to speak for three minutes, I suggest why don't we just take the whole thing off of TV? Them city council meeting, everybody off. Just shut the TV down. Look, we're paying for this.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.[584.79][584.79](laughter)
So we're paying for this. And when I see peoples can go and dream up all these things, since January, this council, look, we got enough bad name and trouble now. Why we just keep on bringing up stuff? If we can't speak for three minutes, then I think you should be allowing nothing but one minute to say something back to us when we come up here and say some. Now, we want to be doing this thing, but this is really going crazy in this city. Hey, come on, stop acting like a bunch of kids, and whoever thought this up, he need to go somewhere and have his hindle beat.
Hi, good evening. My name is Athena Jones. I live at 600 Yorktown Avenue, and the opportunity to speak is an opportunity that we all should have. Five minutes seems as if it's a long time, and I understand that, and you guys are very gracious and generous as elected officials to be able to sit there and withstand each and every one of our conversations and sometimes rebukes. But the reality is, we are living in a time when the opportunity to be able to have the freedom of speech continues to be reduced. The opportunity to be able to be justified and to be able to have our voices heard continues to be taken away. And so is this though along the line of with the legacy that our City Council would like to leave? The citizens in this city has a right to be heard, and if you believe three minutes and five minutes is not a big difference, it is a huge difference. We are talking about an opportunity to fully express what you need to say within the time limit that has always been allotted. Now, if we want to talk about limiting rights as what we have here in the United States, there are definitely states that are limiting the opportunity for people to vote, the opportunity to be able to get licenses, the opportunity to work. These things are being limited, and this is along the same line. Well, you're like, well, why? How is this along the same line? It is a right that we have to express ourselves. It is a right for us to be able to live the lives that we are allowed to live with the opportunity to say, listen, City Council member, I don't agree with what you're saying, and be able to say it and express it in a way to which we have the opportunity to express it within the five minutes allotted, which has always been. So whoever decided that three minutes is enough, have you ever had the opportunity to express yourself within three minutes and be effective versus five minutes and be effective? Have you had the opportunity to be cut off because of where you sit in a position? You're saying that the citizens do not have the opportunity to speak within five minutes, and three minutes is now acceptable because you sit there and we sit here. Well, if it was reversed and you had an issue, would you want three minutes or five minutes to express your situation to the City Council members that you are addressing? We should be allotted the same exact rights and respect that you would want if you were sitting on this side versus elected officials sitting up there. Thank you.[765.04][765.04](applause)
Mr. Vice Mayor, Summons.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is probably the first time you will hear me say this in 18 months. I seconded Dr. Whitaker's resolution on purpose. We do absolutely agree on this three-minute rule. There is no constitutional right to a certain amount of time to speak. One of the reasons I support the three minutes, in the city of Portsmouth, we have always allowed people to speak more frequently, more often, and in a longer period of time and on television than any of our neighboring cities. Always. We will still be allowing more citizen input than any of our neighboring cities at three minutes televised, with no limit on the time. If it takes us till two or three o'clock in the morning, so be it. Talking to the City Council at this meeting is certainly not the only time that a citizen gets to interact with their elected body. And I've said this so many times, maybe you don't take advantage of it, but if you polled each of us sitting here, how many phone calls, how many emails, how many personal meetings, how many personals stop on the streets, stop in the grocery store, you would be letters. We are, I feel like we are so in touch with anybody. I mean, when you call me, it goes to my phone, and it's me. I had a man call me a couple of Sundays ago at about 6:30 on a Sunday morning, and I was awake, drinking my coffee, and the phone rang, and I didn't know the number, and I answered it. And he was like, oh, I'm so sorry, I thought I was going to leave a message. I'm like, you called me, what may I do for you? And he was so embarrassed that he hung up. I called him back a few hours later, and he wouldn't talk to me. But my point is, we are accessible. We're not in Washington or somewhere else. We're right here, and we're right here all the time. So I think three minutes is perfectly acceptable, and I will support that.
Very good.
And just for point of information, Ms. Jones, you had previously signed up to speak as a non-agenda speaker. Because you're speaking in this area, you will have to sign up at a later time because you can't speak in both areas. Members of council, seeing no additional speakers on this item. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, and the second motion, I move that the Council of the City of Portsmouth accept the disparity study submitted by MGT of America.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
We have to...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have to open the floor.
Discussion.
Ladies and gentlemen, our second item this evening is the acceptance of the disparity study by MGT of America. At this time, if there's anyone...
(inaudible).
At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes. Again, for those that are previously spoke, signed up as non-agenda speakers, you would have to relinquish that time in order to speak on this.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Si, and I live at 3104 Garland Drive, and I'm just really concerned about the abuse of City Council to the citizens of this city. To bring up two motions that could have been done at another time or with further discussion is really abuse, and I am tired of being abused by government officials. So that's all I have to say.
Hello, my name is Athena Jones. This is a non-agenda opportunity to speak, so I can speak. I think it's important that when we talk about what's important for the city, that people here are heard, and it's understood from both sides that there is respect. And it just seems as if what's happening tonight, and, you know, it just, there's a lot going on that I may not be, that I may not be privy to, there's a lot going on that I may not be, that I may not understand, but I do know that when I came in tonight, I was going to speak on whether or not the monument was going to be removed or not, and the importance of that. And so considering it's a non-agenda issue, I think it's important that the monument stay because $107,000 on a monument is not acceptable to be spent on that.
Ms. Jones, we're speaking here now on accepting the disparity study that was presented to the City Council. If you're not speaking on that subject, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down.
Sure.
Okay.
And so I think it's important that if we're going to do a study within the city of Portsmouth, that it benefits all of Portsmouth, and we be able to understand where our citizens are coming from regardless of if they understand what's going on with the study or not. I just want to make sure that the voice is heard from the people without hesitation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wayne Davis, 319 Worthington Square. Can anyone on the council explain what this study is? It's a, it's a big mystery to me, and I suspect it's a mystery to many people in the audience. So if someone can explain it, I'd be grateful. Thank you. Thank you, sir.[1167.21][1167.21](applause)
Reggie Allen from Brighton-Purness Park Civic League, and I'm like the gentleman that just spoke. We don't know the results of this study that was done, and you come and bring this up to people, and now you tell them that they got to vote on it or not vote on it. I mean, I think, and that was this item and the item before, you know? You're just coming in and just pushing stuff down our throats, you know? And if you got a problem with the citizens, why don't you tell us? Because that's what you're saying to us. You know, you don't mean nothing.
Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen. Rather do respond, but this is us accepting a study that we commissioned an organization to do on behalf of the city. They have made their presentation, and officially, we need to, as a body, accept what they presented to us. It was presented, was it two meetings ago?
Right.
And it's on television in the work session. So we're not asking you to do anything other than we have to accept what they gave us. And so we're officially... You can come back up to the mic.
You don't know what's going on. You know, you saying accept the study. What is the study? You haven't told us what the study was.
Okay. Mr. Allen, that, we commissioned that study a year ago, almost a year ago.
But you haven't made a presentation to the citizens saying that we're going to accept such and such and this and that.
Okay.
You know, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, Dr. Whitaker.
Right. Just want to make sure that both of the speakers are clear. The information that we are voting on, the disparity study, accepting the findings of it, that study was done and commissioned prior to my coming on council, it has been widely discussed, and it was also presented at, I believe it was our June meeting. And so this is just accepting what has already been paid for and already researched. The purpose of it is, the question you asked, why was the study done, is because we want to legally assure that when we put in a minority and women business enterprise program, you have to have it statistically supported to show that there is a statistically significant difference in the utilization of women and minority businesses because of a case called Croson versus Richmond. And so you can't just put in a program without having that legal foundation, and the council as well as the school board has done that, and so now we're accepting the study.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Yes, sir. Sergeant Major.
I'm back again. How much did this study cost? Is this a black and white thing? Because I remember this in June, but why is all this now? But I tell you what, now, I said before, when I looked up on this council, I told Council Moody and Council Page they'd be here again, but I'm going to tell you, soon y'all ain't going to be here no more. Y'all are doing some of the outrageous things here lately to the citizen, and I'm telling you, it's outrageous. And this study, if it's about black and white, look, let's cut this out. If it's for women or men, you don't have to come and tell us if it's for women or men, whether they black or white. For contract, you're the lowest bidder, then you get the contract. But look, since January, this council has been the worst council I ever seen, and I'm telling you, a lot of you ain't going to be up here no more, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I normally don't respond to Mr. Tolliver. However...
Wait, my first name, my name is not Tolliver, it's Toll.
Tolliver, I'm sorry.
T-O-L-E-R.
Mr. Toll.
Just like yours is Mark Whitaker.
Right, Mr. Tolliver. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. You should know from your military duty that I see you so proudly speak of, which you should, that there was a point in time where the military that you served in was segregated, and there had to be some movements that were done legally to integrate and to allow certain things occur. And so just as that was a black and white issue, we're dealing with the same type of black-white issue still when it comes to contracting. I don't think you would have been opposed to the executive order that integrated the military. And so we're doing similar things just from a different perspective.
This, this is 20, this is 2015. This is not 1926, 1940. This is 2016, 15. This is 2015. Why are we going, bringing up all that? I lived through that. I served through the Jim Crow, but that was the way of life. And without me still staying in and during the Vietnam era and all, and the Vietnam and coming to this, you wouldn't be sitting up here. You'd probably be speaking German or someone's speaking Japanese. So let's be happy that the way we are, and stop bringing up something that would happen a long time ago. Look, let's move on for today, and let's get off this old racist mess. You know, it's really ridiculous. Everybody everywhere I go is talking about Portsmouth and how you perform, not the people's coming up here speaking. It's about your councilman. Hey, let's stop it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Major.
Well, the issue that we're dealing with is not a past issue. We're dealing with a present-day underutilization of minority and women businesses. So what we're doing is not looking at the past, but what has happened presently, and we're going to correct it.
Let me ask you one thing. If you had a, if you had a minority business, and you know they were no good in gun contracts, so you would hire them anyway just because they're minority business, people's, huh? So you would hire them anyway, so just because they're minority or because they're black or white. No, whoever can do the job, that's what you do. Now, this is what you do. And look, these things that we bringing up to this council, look how you upsetting the city. Now, you could be in the paper again tomorrow morning. Everybody from here clean down to Georgia, and I'm missing, I'm really surprised at you. Because I know one time you said before, long time ago, that after nine o'clock, you didn't hear nothing we had to say. No way, it's old tape, you know? So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Scannell, 111 Wyoming Avenue. As you can tell, I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I just have a real quick question. I look on the website regularly. Will this study be available for citizens to at least look at on the website?
We ought to be able to do that, Brian.
Okay. That's just the biggest thing. I mean, these folks are complaining they don't have the information.
It may be up there now, but we'll, we'll make sure it's up there. Thank you. Thank you.
Members of council, seeing no additional speakers on this item. We're voting electronically. This item is adopted six one. 15 dash, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks, sir. I, I missed two liaison reports in the work session because we had so much other business and a couple of other items. Under military liaison work, I wanted to remind everyone that the Coast Guard Eagle will be coming to Portsmouth on August the 19th, and that we have Coast Guard Day celebrating our appointment as an official Coast Guard City. We are excited that that is now been moved to Saturday, November 7th, and is part of the celebration with children's activities and music and food truck radio. We are going to have a 5K race in the downtown area as part of our Coast Guard celebration. So there'll be more information on that to come, but keep that in mind. Regarding the port, I was pleased today to attend the annual meeting of the Virginia Port Authority where Governor McAuliffe attended for a few minutes and talked about Portsmouth and taking the toll off of the Martin Luther King Freeway, talked about rail service and improving the truck traffic in the city of Portsmouth as part of the port expansion. We also heard this morning, Mr. Moody and I were at the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission Monthly Meeting and heard a really fascinating presentation from the EPA representative from Philadelphia on the remediation of the creosote out of the river down at the Atlantic Woods property. And if I can find out when he's going to be back in town, I would love for him to come to a work session and give the council and the public that 10-minute presentation, because I thought it was just fascinating what they're actually doing to clean up the Elizabeth River right there by the Jordan Bridge.
Was that Randy? Randy Sturgeon?
Yeah. It was really excellent. And just, you know, to cut to the chase, the point of all of that remediation by the Jordan Bridge with all that awful stuff and gunk and goo won't be finished until the end of 2017. So, they've still got a long way to go. On the fun side of the house, there's a lot of stuff coming up between now and when we meet again. This Thursday, we start our first Sunset Thursday Concert Series and get-togethers down at what we lovingly call Portside. For those who just moved here, that's at the intersection of Water Street and North Street at the ferry landing by the heart between Harbor Towers and the Renaissance Hotel. So, every Thursday beginning this week, we will have from 6:30 to, I think, 8:00, free music, quiet music, some food and drink available and a nice gathering spot for folks to come down. This weekend, at that same location, we will have Gospel Rama from 3:00 to 8:00 on Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon, also at Portside. On Sunday, we have free movies at City Park and this Sunday, it's Toy Story at 7:00 P.M. And the following weekend, before we meet again, will be the first weekend of the month. So, that means in addition to the regular Saturday farmer's market at High and Court Streets, we will also have our Antiques to Flea Market in the parking garage behind the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame. So, there's always something fun going on and we hope everybody will participate.
Very good. And let me piggyback on that and first of all, thank all of our citizens who attended the Smooth Jazz Festival that we had this weekend. It was well-attended. We had over 3,000 people to attend. We had our very own Karen Briggs that performed on Friday night and then we had Brian Simpson performed on Saturday night. And again, it was well-attended. We got some very positive feedback from citizens. A lot of them thank me. You need to thank this council. These are the types of things that we're trying to do in our communities to bring back that, what we used to have. This is in line with our Portside piece and trying to have something every Thursday to bring citizens together to be able to fellowship and enjoy themselves. And on that note, we're pleased to invite all of our citizens on August the 22nd. We're about a month away. August the 22nd, Saturday, from 11:00 to 5:00, we're going to have a Back to School slash Community Day right here at Intellos. We're inviting all of our citizens there and we want you all to come out. We're looking for volunteers. We want this to be a community event. We're looking for civic leagues, churches, sororities, fraternities to come out, show your colors, show your pride. We're going to have free food. We're going to have, for the kids, we're going to have a drumline competition. We've got four college right now, yeah, four colleges, Norfolk State, Virginia State, Virginia Union, I see Mr. Overton over there, and Elizabeth City State University will be participating, as well as four high schools here, including our IC Norcom and Churchland, as well as King Forks. And I think there's another high school from Elizabeth City. But again, this Back to School slash Community Day is for all of us. Our goal is to have a backpack with school supplies in the hand of every school-aged child that comes out. And so, if your organization or your church or your business is willing to want to donate and participate in this, give us a call. We'll be more than happy to receive it. We've got a school bus lined up. We'll do a stuff the bus. If, we'll have certain days leading up to the 22nd that if your church or organization want to do something in a grander fashion, we can have the school bus swing by and we can stuff the bus. And you may find a council member or a school board member on the school bus that you may want to converse with as you're stuffing the bus. But again, this is something that we're trying to do to reengage our communities and bring back those types of things and to show our support for our schools and our kids. And so, again, we'll have all kinds of games and competition, testing, trivia questions, who's the strongest civic league, maybe a tug-of-war. Maybe a competition, is anybody out there smarter than a councilman? That's a loaded question, but please, on August 22nd, we want the whole community to come out and again, a fun-filled day, it's free, bring the kids out. We do have, and anyone who want to donate, or if you want to just write a check instead of bringing backpacks and school supplies, you can write the check to the Portsmouth Schools Foundation. They're 501(c)(3) and then we can go and purchase those items that are needed. We are looking for sponsors. We've already got two big sponsors. Portsmouth's very own Bishop Kim Brown from Mount Lebanon Baptist Church has agreed to be the presenting sponsor, which is a $20,000 assessment. Also, another one of Portsmouth's very own Bishop Jerome Williams at New Testament, right here off of Rapid Hand, right there. He's agreed a $5,000 donation and they're going to bring all of their members out and bring backpacks. I think Bishop Kim Brown has also agreed to bring 1,000 backpacks. So, we want to stuff them with school supplies. Any other church, anybody, you don't have to give at that level. We're looking for businesses. I've talked to a couple of businesses. I heard back from one yesterday, Mr. Dan Aston at the Whitmore Company who has the place right here on London and Elm Avenue, the quarters. He's agreed to donate $1,000. So, anybody willing to contribute, we'll take all of those contributions, make them to the Portsmouth School Foundation. We'll make sure that we send our kids back to school in grand fashion. And again, this is something else that we're trying to do collectively, the school board, the city council, all of you, to be able to show support, not only in our communities, but for our children. So, stay tuned for more of that and thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. And I might add to that, this coming Thursday, July the 30th, is first in a series of concerts down at Portside.
That's right.
Sunset Thursdays is the name. It's in vogue again to refer to it as Portside, not North Harbor or that place between the Renaissance and the parking garage. It's back being called Portside. So, I know LaVores Pace and his crew's done a good job coming up with, I think, a catchy theme. It's got a variety of entertainment. I hope he didn't consider it criticism today when I said, "Where's all this jazz?" You know, to each his own. A little bit of that goes a long ways, but a lot of people love it. The main thing is people in Portsmouth and elsewhere, once again, will be able to congregate at Portside. Those of you who've been around a while, remembering the '80s, that was the place to go. So, I think it'll be the place to go again and beginning this Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00. Hope to see you there.
Very good. And before we wrap up, Mr. Manager, we do want to thank you and your staff for doing this. We, I mean, this has been something that this council has charged him and he's ultimately given that responsibility to Mr. Pace. And if this weekend and the Jazz Festival and how that was done is any indication, we're in for a great August and September. And I want to thank you and your staff for reacting so quickly. And again, this stuff is hard work. It's hard work to put on these things and plan them and organize them and do all of those types of things. And so, we want to make sure we always thank our staff and all of their support. So, Mr. Manager, would you please convey that to all of the folks? All right. Madam Clerk?
15-280, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. 15-281, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Ted Lamb.
Five, right?
It's five tonight.
You've got five minutes, Mr. Lamb. Good evening.
No, I will, I'll take my three minutes like everyone else. Members of staff, council members, vice mayor, mayor, and of course, the citizens of Portsmouth, good evening. My name is Ted Lamb and I live at 301 Allen Road here in Portsmouth. Several months ago, I came before you to speak about the PTA initiative in order to build up membership in our local schools' PTAs. At that time, I explained that I would come before this board again and let you know the progress of that effort. I explained then that we had over 1,500 total members in our schools in those PTAs at that time. Two schools took up the challenge to walk the streets and I would join them in door-knocking to encourage citizens to become involved in our schools. Those two schools were Brighton Elementary and Lakeview Elementary. As I said then and I will say now, thank you to those schools and those PTA boards for allowing me the opportunity to walk and talk in the community in order to activate them more in our schools. Brighton Elementary PTA was able to take the PTA initiative. We branded it and called it Taking PTA to the Streets, which because of these efforts, the Brighton PTA was recognized in the publication of The Voice, which is the Virginia PTA Association, got an award for it and was recognized state and nationally because of those efforts.
Very good.
Because of this, they also received two other awards. It was 100% teacher and administrators signed on as PTA members and also the Founder's Award. This is an example of what we can do together to make our schools better. Incidentally, I told you then that there was over 1,500 members. The goal was to hit 2,000. We made 1,800, so we didn't hit 2,000. But because of this, this year, this initiative is going to look much different and broader. The citywide council of PTAs has decided to turn this into a citywide initiative. So, starting this year on August 15th, join us at the farmer's market in Old Town and we will have a table and we will start signing citizens up to join a PTA in their child's school. Or you can choose any PTA that you want because you don't need a student in school to do that. Secondly, and this is my last point, in order to remain, in order to continue to find more ways to communicate better with the citizens of Portsmouth, I have developed an email newsletter. This newsletter will provide a venue for citizens to ask questions and for me to also to keep citizens informed of important information and events. If anyone would like to receive a copy of this newsletter, they can call me at 483-4769 or contact me at tedlamb@hotmail.com. And of course, if there's anyone here that wishes to talk to me about this after the meeting, that would be fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. William Connolly?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens of Portsmouth. Last year, I spoke to you several years ago about hiring a independent auditor and we asked that that auditor would produce to us a layman's version of the thing, "We're not what you do. We don't understand what it would..." But if he would produce that, we would be happy. Well, Mr. Moody tells me that the auditor works for city council. Well, that's fine and you wish, but we haven't heard one word from city council or from the auditor as to exactly what the city finances are. Counsel, I'd like to go on to the finances. Counsel tells us that 50% of the land is owned by the government and we get no taxes from them. But I tell you that Portsmouth is blessed. The US government statistics tells us there are 63,000 jobs in Portsmouth. And that's for one, that would be one in a third job for every house in Portsmouth. We found out that there's about 34,000 to 44,000 homes in Portsmouth, 8,000 high-paying jobs at the repair station, more highly skilled workers in the naval hospital, the Coast Guard, MERS and all the support jobs that that industry produces to us. So, we are not job poor. The newspapers tells us that there are 14,500 students in the Portsmouth school system. 80% or more come from poverty or below that, from homes that are poverty, at the poverty level or below that. I just don't understand how that can be with all this jobs and all this high-paying money that's in the city, we have a high poverty level. Mayor Wright tells us that we must stop the outflow of people and become a city of choice. That was well said. I've heard him say it 100 times. I've heard all the other council people, since I've been in the city for almost 20 years. That's all I hear. We need to stop the outflow. It hasn't happened. Now, this would be totally impossible with the way city council gets along with each other. You guys are in the paper more than the funny section. It's been talked about for years and years and we must start somewhere. Mayor Wright has said, "Let us start by having our students wear uniforms." And that would be twofold. It would teach the students his civic duty and the parent who dresses them that they must become involved. For example, the students no longer would need to worry about who's wearing what, and that's a big problem throughout America. It's not just Portsmouth. That happens everywhere. And I'm going to give you a very fine example of that. Last Christmas, the people were lined up around the shoe stores for blocks to buy Nike or rather buy Michael Jordan new shoes at $189 a pair. The shoe that costs a little over $25 to manufacture, the write-up on that is unbelievable. But that is, so having said that, to become a city of choice, I would like to say to you, it will be a lot of work. We must come together as a community. And right now, that would create a lot of, the talk and rhetoric that would come would recreate a lot of hard feelings. I will be hurt and you will be hurt by the rhetoric that comes out of the community meeting. But I ask all the community and you, council, to put aside your problems and just think nothing but the future of Portsmouth. And that is important. We need to do it. We need to get out of the newspaper with all the hate rhetoric that comes out and all the bad publicity. If the mayor wants us to be a city of choice, we got to clean up our act. Okay, I'd like to move one more item, which is very dear to my heart. The city was granted three federal grants since I've been here. One for $14 million, another for $12 million, and now asked for $9 million to clean up Lincoln Park. And all this money came from the American taxpayer. We owe them to buy American products to support jobs. Let's start by buying American steel for the $30 million repair job of the seawall. I wrote you all a letter this November. I also included a letter, Mr. Deborah Wright asked me to include a letter to the newly-elected Councilman Whitaker, and I did that. I call that the city engineer. I talked to the city engineer and all of you danced around about this. Well, Councilman Simmons said to me, "The law doesn't allow us to interfere." The engineer said, "Well, maybe we can't afford American steel." You just asked for $9 million off the American taxpayer and you can't afford to buy American steel? There's something wrong with your thinking. Okay? And that's all I have to say. There's not more I want to say, but I do want to say this. What you proposed, the three-minute rule, we just went through this about a year ago.
Mr. Connolly?
And that makes me sick. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good night.
Ms. Juanita Haynes Jones?
Good evening, Mayor Wright and fellow councilmen. It's that time again. I'm standing before you. My name is Juanita Harris Jones and I'm a citizen of Portsmouth. And I'm also a representative of the Virginia Breast Council Foundation, the Hampton Roads We are a volunteer and a state-based foundation or organization. And what I mean by that is that everything that we do in the state of Virginia stays in the state of Virginia. We have two fundraisers for a year. Our annual walk, with our ninth annual walk, is coming up in September 12th. And we have a luncheon in November. So, I'm extending the invitation again to the board, to the citizens of Portsmouth, and to the surrounding cities. It's important to us that we get out and we walk and show support because cancer is a very serious act indeed. Every time you turn around, someone is in your family is in touch, a fan, a friend, anybody that's dying of cancer. So, to sit and say, "I know somebody," is not enough. You need to get out and we need to walk. Also, this year, I'm excited because we're going to have Zuma by Michelle. She's going to warm us up. We're going to have the Greenrod Dodge of Chesapeake. They're going to bring their... We're going to have the Greenbrier Dodge of Chesapeake, they're going to bring their championship breast cancer car. And we're going to have the Southern Virginia Raiders minor league football team and their representatives are going to be here. And they also have tickets for the game, which is going to be, the first one's going to be August 1st, August 8th, August 22nd, September 19th, and their big day is going to be celebrating cancer, which is going to be September 26th at the sports complex in Virginia Beach. And as usual, I'm always sending this invitation, but I don't never see nobody from the board walking this wall with us. I mean, you know, you, you represent us, so you need to come on out and exercise with us and have some fun with us. And if not, I'll be right back up there again, sending my shirt to you, Mayor Wright, before you leave. So, in, in essence, the most important thing is for you to realize how important cancer is.
That's right.
That's my goal. I don't care about the non-stuff and the other stuff, cancer is very, very, you know, every time you turn around, you burying somebody. So, it's, I'm serious about that. So, I'm extending the invitation. You have a flyer, you have a registration form, you have a information pack if you need more information on our foundation, which has been established for 24 years. And if you need to talk to me, I'm easy to get in contact with. So, if anybody has any questions, I hope to see you on September 12th in front of the Antellos. And if you want to purchase that car that's going to be raffle off, I have first bids on that, so, but you know, we all can share. And I'd like to present, this is my vice president and this is Mr. Powell from Chesapeake Greenbrier Motors.
All right. Thank you. Good night. No, sir, you're not going to be there to speak, she can't relinquish her time to you. You'd have to sign up. But thank y'all for coming and thank you for what you're doing in Greenbrier. Greenbrier Dodge, is it, is that what that is? All right, thank you.
Mr. Baron Randall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I'm here tonight to talk about the monument, but before I do, I want to thank Mr. Cherry and Dr. Whitaker for being with us this past weekend. We had a wonderful reunion for citizens of Portsmouth, they joined Senator Lucas and so many others for a weekend of festivities. I'm here today, I want to make this perfectly clear though, that I am still unashamedly and unapologetically black. So, do not take this as any form of defeat, but I think that with all that we're facing, that this can be a compromise. I talked to a great amount of affluent individuals in the city of Portsmouth and they're willing to come forward if you all can take a month to think about this. They will agree that the monument would, you know, serve as better purpose inside of a museum or something like that nature. But I think that at this point with $100,000 that need to be raised or given to remove it and $7,000 to repair this, this street, I just think that that's just a bit much in my personal opinion. They kind of reasoned, talked some sense to me and we kind of reasoned together. I think what's necessary is that you guys would be fair and if you all would give us a piece of land, we preferred the roundabout right here in front of City Hall, but if you all give us a piece of land, we will build from private funds, we don't need one penny given from the city of Portsmouth, only thing we need from the city is the land. But we will build a monument of peace that will be no bigger than, no larger than, no wider than, no greater than the monument that is sitting around the corner. I guess for all, for purposes and intents, this unfortunately represents hate in our opinion. But we, I believe that they are entitled to that hate and we're asking that you all will be gracious enough to give us a piece of land so that we can build a monument of peace. And the good thing about this monument, this is just not a black agenda, this is individuals from the city that are, that are citizens that are also white, Hispanic as well as blacks, and they are all willing to contribute and help raise the funds for us to build a monument of peace. So, it won't be a monument for black people, it'll be a monument for equality and represents peace. And I think that that should be a equal and fair compromise. So, I do stand with my fellow council members that feel like the monument need to be gone. I think it needs to be in the bottom of the ocean, but that's my personal opinion. However, I digress and understand that it's not about Baron Randall, but it's about the greater needs of the greater community. And I think that if they can have a monument of hate in our opinion, that we should be entitled to have a monument of peace. And again, we will be back asking and asking until you all make a decision. And again, once you all make that decision, then the committee individuals will come forward so that you all can know that this isn't, and I hate to use this word because I was told that it's a racist-type word, but you know that we're not shucking and jiving. Want to encourage Dr. Whitaker before I take my seat, it's amazing how this man is speaking for the causes of the people and wasn't even on this council prior to January, but you have individuals that want to demonize him. And I understand it when it comes from racist white individuals, I understand that. But when you see black people get up and say it, it's very disheartening because what's happening around this country with Sandra Bland, and I, and let me say this, not to get into it, y'all don't even have to respond to it because I sent you the information to follow up the chief, I'm going to get a chief of police an opportunity. As a black man, I made a post on Facebook and, and just being who I am, I had three white, non-uniform police officers show up at my door banging to get in and they claim all they wanted to do was ask me some questions. And this was this past Wednesday. Thank God I had them on camera because of course they would say that they didn't do it. So, when you hear these people talking about equality and then you have the audacity to say something like that was back then, well, what world are you living in? Because you don't even deserve to wear a uniform and be respected when you don't even respect your own self and your own kind.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ursula Murphy.
My name is Ursula Murphy and I live here in the city of Portsmouth. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, gentlemen of the city council and citizens of Portsmouth, I come before you today with a suggestion that I hope will inspire all of us to consider a position of healing and forward movement. But before I begin, I'd like to offer a simple prayer for all of us. God, I hope, help us to set aside everything we think we know so that we may have an open mind and a better understanding of all that is presented and to the fine people of Portsmouth, First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Whitaker and Councilman Moody and the more than 25 speakers who came before this body two weeks ago for providing the inspiration to the suggestion that I bring before you tonight. In reflecting over these last two weeks, I find that many people have offered plausible perspectives to both sides of the arguments surrounding the Confederate monument. I would like to offer a suggestion geared towards a solution that would allow Portsmouth to stand strong in recognizing the rich history, good and bad, that surrounds us. I'd like to propose that we, the citizens, raise the money to erect a new monument to acknowledge and respect the feelings of those who feel that the role of the African-Americans in our community during those Confederate days was overlooked and that there, that what they went through didn't matter. This injustice can and should be acknowledged and rectified. The location of this monument should be downtown to balance the history and the land should be donated by the city for this effort. I would like to suggest that monument be located on Court Street across from the current monument. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Ami Creekmore.
Let me make this quick. Good afternoon, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, council members and city of Portsmouth. My name is Ami Creekmore. I am a Portsmouth native, Old Town business owner, a Old Town resident, I see Norcom and Norfolk State University alumni. I stand before you with two issues, but first I would like to say, council members, you all represent us and you must lead by example. And it's just, it saddens me to have my friends calling me from Georgia, speaking about our council here, you know, and I just think we really need to, to work on, on unity. My first issue is, I've been a business owner for 12 years, only four of them in Portsmouth, and this is the first time in all my professionalism where I feel the need to be armed at work at all times and I'm a Portsmouth native. The issue with the homeless needs to be addressed, it's not fair to the business owners nor the customers who pay a toll to come and patronize us and then have to spend two to three more dollars when they leave the facilities to the aggressive beggars to avoid confrontation. Not to mention that they are breaking in at least eight cars weekly and that's only in the 600 block of High Street where I, where I live and work. I, I've been a community activist for years, supporting these same individuals. I'm a lover of all people, but there's a big problem when I can't sit on my neighbor's patio at 619 Cantina and have a meeting with my employees in midday without being, without money being demanded from me. And the moment that I offer to buy this person food instead of giving them money, they proceed to me, to walk to me aggressively screaming, "Who the fuck I think I am?" With his shirt off, ready to fight, to the point where I have to grab my knife off the table and stand up and defend, defend myself. And not to mention this same guy attacked someone else a week before and, and the manager of 619 Cantina is here to, is here to, you know, let you all know that this situation is, is serious and it's not just me that's going through it. I have been very supportive, I'm out every Christmas and Thanksgiving with my clients, taking care of these same individuals, donating food, supplying them with everything. I understand they have needs, I understand they have mental illnesses, I understand it's drug addiction and all of these things. But when it comes down to me having to be extorted at my workplace, my clients be extorted and they're trying to come and patronize me when they just paid a toll to come through, that's a big problem. And, and someone needs to address it, we have cameras all down there. One week my window got broken, was busted out, the very next day, my friend's window was busted out, very, parking space right beside it. It's not fair to us, we pay a lot of money to be down here. I've been down here for four years, I love this community, I love, I'm, I'm, I'm born and raised here. I have ideas along with my, my colleagues, other business owners that I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of to, to deal with the homeless, homeless issues and we'll do everything in our power to, to help you all just, just get some, some type of graps on this, on this situation. I know my time's limited, but I want to speak on my, my next issue, which I've had from day one in Portsmouth. I can't believe, can't, can't begin to tell you the amount of racism I've been experiencing since my business has been in Old Town. As blunt and, and as direct as a person saying to me, as I try to hand them my business card, "No, I'll never come in your salon because I'm a racist." And just like I told him, it takes a very ignorant person to hate someone for something they did not choose to be. And when it comes down to hating someone, if you, if you, if you, if you're hating someone because of your definition, if you, when, when I think of a nigger, I think of a hostile, aggressive thug. And to all of the racist Caucasian individuals, I hate niggers too. But it's a big difference between a melanous-skinned, filled king of queen and a nigger. Okay? This country, this, 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 this area was built on, on the, on the backs of my ancestors and stolen from the Native American ancestors, that, that, that blood runs through my veins.
Thank you, Ms. Creekmore. Thank you. Good night.
Uh, Ms. Mayor Wright?
Yes, ma'am.
I know the time is out, but whenever you are, whenever someone can reach out to me and address these issues, we have, we have ideas, myself, the business owners down here, Pastor Amlet, he's standing with me and, and anything that you all can come up with, I have ideas that, to, to match it, to, to get some type of, get some type of control in this city. We need our city back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chirr.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, yes. I was sitting here talking, talking to the interim manager about some of her concerns and he, he never knew that the chief was going to be reaching out to her tonight and also, you know, letting her know about some things, one, to give the right to enforce the transportation laws on her property and whatever else you can do to, to help her out. So, chief will be talking to you tonight. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rob Welber.
Thanks for having me up here, council members. Excuse me, I'm the treasurer of the Portsmouth Sports Club, Rob Welber, I'm 425 Sussex Drive. We are sponsoring a punt, pass and kick competition in Portsmouth, August 15th at Woodrow Wilson High School. It's an opportunity for children ages six to 15 to come out and throw a football, kick a football and punt a football. And if they win, if they have the highest combined score in their age group, then they get to advance to a sectional competition, which will probably be held in the DC area. If they do well there, then they get to advance to the national competition, which is held at the AFC or NFC championship games for the respective conferences. It's an opportunity for the, the kids to get out and, and interact with other children. I'm in the process of working with Woodrow Wilson High School to get some of the football players to come out and, and teach the kids how to throw the football, kick the football, punt the football before they get out there to, to perform in the competition. And they're also going to be able to interact with other members of the community, people in the sports club that come out. I gave some flyers to Ms. White to, for the council members, if you guys could give this to members of your church, the civic leagues, people you interact with, to give them the information, I would appreciate it. They can go to nflppk.com to register ahead of time or they can register on site, they just need to have proof of age. And they can also email pscppk@gmail.com if they have any questions and I can answer all those questions for them. Just, I thought this was a great opportunity, there are only two other punt, pass and kick competitions in the area, one's in Virginia Beach and one is in Hampton. Chesapeake and Norfolk Suffolk aren't doing anything like this and the Portsmouth Sports Club has come together to put this together for the kids. So, thank you very much for your support, anything you guys can do, I would appreciate.
Thank you. And where are you going to have the competition again? Is it Wilson?
Wilson High School, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Chirr.
Mr. Walker, anyway, I just want to say that, you know, we've got some programs that we might be, might be to partner with some of the youth programs, Westmoreland Children Youth and the other programs. Might not look like it, but I was, I was a punt, pass and kicker about, about 40 years ago. So, I was pretty good too at the time.
We've reached out to Tyrone Heinz.
Oh, good.
For Westmoreland, we've talked to LaVores Pace, talking to Clifton Jones. We've got, but the more people hear about it, the better. So, if, I, I don't mind if you hit them three or four times.
All right.
All right. We'll help you with that. Thank you.
Ms. Frances Jones.
Good evening, my name is Frances Jones. I live at 600 Yarcktown Avenue and of course, Athena is my daughter. Where do I start? One, the young lady who was from the business, let's start there. I had that same, same encounter in front of my home at 600 Yarcktown Avenue where you guys built that lovely building that's still unoccupied. That's the behavioral healthcare building where the addicts is going to come, more of them. But I had the same experience when I've been met with a guy and said, "Hey, I'm hungry." And I'm going... And I'm going, "Okay, the oasis is over there." He approached me, and I'm going, "Wait a minute, we have a problem here." But see, I know that there's a God above. But the problem is, they're coming. And what do I do about it? I always say the same measure you measured to me, measure to you. Because you're not doing anything on High Street where you want them away from where they're located now, and you thrust them into our neighborhood, voila, right across from Mr. Edmund's alma mater, IC Norcom. Interesting. The second thing I want to talk about is the monument. I frankly don't care about the monument. I'm gonna tell you the facts. Let me tell you what the facts about that monument is. It was put there to remember those who died, whether or not they were good or bad. If you put a new monument, like we want to put a new monument, what good is gonna do? The monument is not gonna change a man's heart. You can pull all the monuments you want to put, but if the man's heart does not change, the hatred is still gonna be there. So why are you building it? Why are you gonna move it? I pay high taxes in this city. Are you gonna waste $107,000-plus to move a monument unless you want the artifacts all out of it to sell it, to pay for the tunnel? Come on, let's think reasonable. Come on, people. My tax dollars, I work every day, seven days a week sometimes, overtime. But the problem is this, we want a quick fix. Only Jesus Christ can change the heart of a man in order to make him stop hating. Only Jesus Christ can make you guys stop bickering with one another if you have him in your heart, and that goes for the whole world and abroad. So my thing is this, I think you need to get on your knees and read the Bible some. I think that's everybody's problem. The monument stays. Don't waste my tax dollars on moving it. The people had a right to put it there when they did. Although it was part of my history, I know, certainly, sure, I may not be as brown as some of you, but I'm still brown. Black, you understand what I'm saying? Let's use our brains. Hatred, hatred is in the heart of a man, not in the stone. It's not in this. It's in our hearts. It's in our mind. It's been bred in us, some of us. I was born in South Carolina. Let me tell you when the land in my family. How long has it been there? It's been there December 30th, 1776. There's a lot of history standing before you. And I was born in Beaufort County, South Carolina. You can look it up in your register. Black folks, look at me, hello. Everybody didn't go through slavery. We got slaves today. We got slaves today, children, white, black, Chinese, Japanese, you name it, they're still slaves. But my thing is this, I think we need to go to church. But then again, depends upon what church you go to. You need to go to the church that preached the word. You know, the word God says, "Come like my people, and sit like my people," but your hearts fall from Him. When you have Jesus Christ in your heart, hey, He transformed the renewal of your mind. A man color of His skin doesn't matter. Where the God said, "What does not, what goes in you does not bother you, but what comes out of a man tells who he or she is." Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Sergio O'Neil.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Wright, and all the citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Sergio O'Neil. I'm a Portsmouth native. I actually do not live in the city of Portsmouth. I live right out of the water, right on Airline Boulevard, where Chesapeake runs from Portsmouth. However, over the past few months, I've become very interested in Portsmouth. A lot of events that have happened in the city of Portsmouth has personally affected me and my family for two reasons. One being that my cousin's son, the father of my cousin's son was killed over the past few months. A lot of other things that have happened have affected my family. My, my grandfather still lives in Portsmouth. He's a retired City of Portsmouth employee. He was employed with City of Portsmouth for 40 years. To see the type of things that have happened in Portsmouth have really disheartened me, but at the same time, to, you know, it wanted to me to do something to give back to my hometown. What I've done along with a few other citizens of Portsmouth, we've created what we call the Circle of Youth Community Outreach Organization, and we are in the business of, well, not in the business, in the outreach of taking 13- and 17-year-old youth and training them to becoming outstanding citizens through workshops and through educational ideals and some other things that we are gonna, that we plan to put them through to bring the future of Portsmouth back to where it used to be. I'm 27 years old, and to, when I was younger, coming up to right now, to see what's going on in Portsmouth is a totally different ballgame. I mean, there are no, the recreation centers are falling apart. These kids have nowhere to go to enjoy themselves, and the only thing they have to turn to is the streets to learn from. Then somebody's mother or father or whoever is burying another child because no one was there to take the time to teach them a different way, and that's what we have come to do. We're not asking for any city money. We're not asking for any of that. We are taking private donations from individuals who are concerned about the future of Portsmouth just like we are. I know one day that, that one of those children, that the children that are coming up in Portsmouth may be my doctor or my lawyer, or whatever the case might be, and to see them not have something to, to remember, to go through, to have something to be proud, you know, of coming from Portsmouth is just outrageous. So again, like I said, we have created the Circle of Youth Community Outreach Group. We're looking for 13- and 17-year-olds to be trained in citizenship and, and proper etiquette and workforce training and other things to be prepared to take on the future of Portsmouth. We have a sign-up coming up on the first. It will be at the Midtown Kroger Center on August the first from 4:00 to 6:00. Anyone who has 13- and 17-year-old youth that are, are looking to be trained up in the, in the right way of citizenship, in the right way of job training, the right way of being able to interact with the, with their local government, please bring your children out. We're also looking for adults who can be mentors to these youth, who, who in other way would not have anyone to, to bring them up, to help bring them up. A lot of the youth that we are targeting don't have the family like we used to have to help us to seed in life. So we asked the citizens of Portsmouth or any city councilperson that is interested, come out on August the first at the, at the Kroger Midtown Shopping Center. It's gonna be in the IC Norcom Community Room from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done.
Counsel, your final speaker is Mr. Dwight Powell.
Mr. Powell, you back. You were trying to double-dip tonight, huh? All right.
I apologize for not knowing how to proceed.
That's all right. You gonna give out a car, we'll let you speak. You got five minutes.
I won't need that long. Good evening, Mayor Wright, and distinguished members of the city council. My name is Dwight Powell. I'm the commercial vehicle and business link manager at Greenboro Dodge and Chesapeake. The card that we're raffling off that you see on the flyers that we've distributed is a 2012 Dodge Challenger that had won the first prize in 3M's Wrap the Wrap Competition that was held in Las Vegas earlier this year. One of the reasons that we chose the breast cancer theme is because several members of our staff have, were diagnosed with breast cancer, including our owner's mother, our owner Ray Kotowski's mother. So we chose the breast cancer theme even before we even got to the point of thinking how we would partner with the Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation. So the proceeds from the raffle of this car is going to go to the Virginia Breast Council, Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation. And that's how I partner with Ms. Jones. So we're gonna be selling tickets starting August 1st. They're $50. The winning ticket will win the car, but we're gonna have 15 other winners. That's gonna include things from a 55-inch TV to a, different denominations of gas cards from $50 to $300. So I'm gonna be partnering with Ms. Jones with the Walk in September. I'm gonna have the card here live. And if anybody interested in tickets can go on our website, greenbroaddodge.com, where we have a secure page set up where you can purchase tickets, and we will deliver the tickets to you. And we're gonna have a function at the end of October, which October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so the drawing will be held at the end of that. So certainly, we certainly appreciate any support that the council can give to this agenda. I will be available. My information is listed on our website, and I certainly appreciate y'all's time this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powell, and thank you to Greenboro for what you're doing here. You said this is a 2012 vehicle. What happened to it in Vegas?
3M is the company that, that does the wrap.
Speaking of that.
3M is the company that does.
3M?
3M.
Okay.
And our company, Title Wave Graphics, is the only, only graphics company in Hampton Rose that's certified 3M. So what you see in the picture is not paint. That's a actual wrap of a car.
Okay. Like they do the, the HRT buses.
The HRT buses with the Norfolk State themes or whatever theme on it. It's actually a wrap, and the winner's gonna get that car, and the proceeds will go to a very, as a cancer survivor myself, I'm very passionate about.
I can see it.
Doing causes for cancer.
Yeah. All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any other questions? Or you cutting?
Well done. All right. On that note, and a great note, we adjourn. Good night.